And welcome to Candidates Corner on LPTV Libertarian Party Television, a production of the Libertarian Party and Libertarian National Committee. Whitney Bilyeu, serving as Chair. As always, John Gapso on the big board, giving you the graphics, the infotainment, livening up the show with all sorts of curiosities. My name is Pat Ford. It is my lifelong honor to be involved, not only with the Libertarian Party, but the incredible opportunity to meet candidates like we're going to meet tonight in a virtual format. Hopefully, we'll meet some days in person soon. But to set the stage, to give them an opportunity to advance, not only just their election prospects, but to bring full flower, if you will, to the personalities, the wit, the intelligence, the perspective, and quite frankly, the combat and the fight inside these Libertarian candidates that we've met over the last, believe it or not, almost year and a half that we've been doing Candidates Corner. There's always three reasons, three purposes for this hour or so that we spend together. We want to give the Libertarian community an opportunity to meet our wonderful down-ballot candidates. For every one of you who says, "We need to build a bench." Well, newsflash, the bench is here, the bench is alive, and they ain't warming it. We've got people across this country fighting for it to be involved in electoral politics, and some of them are beginning to win. And the ones that don't, as we often say here, perform an invaluable service, not only to our grassroots movement, not only to our philosophy, not only to our worldview, not only to the nap, not only to our statement of principles, not only to our wonderful platform, but they also serve as ambassadors to a world that needs to be set free. No more so ever, if you will, in terms of in-toten politics, given what happened yesterday with the speech of our president. At a time when the 9/11 anniversary is being memorialized, when our government describes those who are pursuing liberty as the terrorism that is most concerning to them, at a time when our nation's civil liberties not under attack, but are under siege, we need people like John Stafford Stanley more than ever. We take folks like John Stafford Stanley, I keep saying Stanley, I'm sorry, I'm Irish, John Stafford Stanley, and we challenge them to incorporate what we call lunch pail voter issues, and take them and view them and explain them and discuss them and analyze them and debate them through a Libertarian prism, a Libertarian perspective. For many folks in Kernersville, North Carolina, this will be their first opportunity, not just to meet a Libertarian, but a Libertarian who is running to help steward, remember, we don't use the G-word here, the govern word, to steward their community's resources through some of the most challenging times since the end of World War II. And equally of importance is an opportunity for folks either tonight live or in the coming days, to understand that a gentleman who is taking the opportunity to run for, be an alderman, and he's going to explain that to us, I always say town council, well, to be, to run for his town's, if you will, council slash alderman, is just as important to the Libertarian on Cape Cod as it is to the Libertarian running for office or as an activist in C-TAC, or to someone like our esteemed LNC member slash Florida Chair, who lives in Key West. Because it is through steward, community stewarding of resources, it is through the presence that they take in regular folks' lives by simply inserting themselves into the political process, that we can once again be a nation free in our lifetime, that they can understand that great ideas don't require force. That's why we do this every week. As always, a very long-winded explanation to a very simple set of concepts. John Stafford Stanley, welcome to our show, and thank you for joining us tonight. And the first thing we're going to ask you is, what is an alderman?
So, yeah, an alderman is basically just city council. We have five members here in Kernersville that sit with the mayor, and then we have a town manager that pretty much sets everything and does our dirty work for us.
Excellent. So it's just a highfalutin bougie term for town council, eh? Fair enough? Fair enough. And why, the most pressing question I had today is, again, once, one of the reasons why I love to do the show is I am a newspaper junkie, and this, by having you folks on means I just have to sit down and read newspapers I haven't read before. But why, the heartbeat of Kernersville for 74 years, the Kernersville News maintains that, in fact, Kernersville, North Carolina is the heart of the triad. What, talk to us about the triad, and then let's talk about Kernersville, North Carolina, the issues, the challenges, the beauty of it, its greatness, what it's good at, and tell, give us the full story.
Well, the triad is three cities really put together, is Greensboro, High Point, and Winston-Salem, and Kernersville's right there in the middle of them. And so that's, while we are considered the heart of the triad, we connect it all. And like any other small town, we have, we have big issues, especially being in that proximity between very large cities.
But educate us, what's, what's on the hearts, what's in the hearts, I should say, and on the minds of the good citizens of Kernersville?
Well, luckily, right now, it's mostly roads and infrastructure. We're growing at a certain rate that our infrastructure is having a hard time to keep up.
Is this because of suburban sprawl? Are you, do you have a lot of folks who are, if you will, on the run from the bigger cities and looking for a quieter, a quieter place to live and with proximity to their employment? What's causing this sudden growth in Kernersville?
Well, a lot of the growth is a manipulated growth, and I hate to put it that way, but that's pretty much what it is. So we're bringing in really big companies like FedEx and Amazon, and we even have more builders that are coming out to build really big office buildings and factories and stuff of that nature. So we're manipulating a lot of growth and getting people to move in. And we need the housing so we can collect property taxes and benefit the government that's here, and not so much the people, but we can get into that.
No, to develop on that, take that away, because if, is it quote-unquote planned growth? Is it, are there tax breaks going towards these organizations to move in, or is this just really the free market, you know, where folks see an opportunity for perhaps less expensive land adjacent to these major cities? You know, folks from the Northeast, for example, you know, when we hear about the, when we would first hear the term "triad," we would be more likely to think of, you know, the Research Triangle, that aspect of North Carolina. And I've spent a lot of time on the road in North Carolina, and so I know I've been to the triad on more than one occasion, sometimes driving through, sometimes, you know, headed there. But I understand that they are, it's a vibrant economic entity unto itself, quite distinct from the Research Triangle in more the eastern part of the state. But, so what, what's driving, what's driving this growth?
Well, for one, the free market is driving some of the growth, but our town likes to give out tax incentives and give big companies the break to come in here and build. For one, it's just a prime, prime location for companies, so that's why they like it. But we use a lot of tax dollars to do that, and it hurts a lot of our small businesses that we can already kind of leave alone and not tax them so much, to let them grow and build.
One of the questions I always ask, because the same madness goes on here in Rhode Island where I live, you think they would just understand that I'm here and they should be done with this nonsense, but for some reason, I'm not good enough. But I challenge all the time, the question I always ask is, who is economic development supposed to benefit, if you will, if the town is, are going to artificially alter markets and engage in these type of activities? Is it for the people who are here and who have been in a town like either our case, Cumberland, Rhode Island, or your case, Kernersville, North Carolina, who've been here for generations, or is it for outsiders looking to come in and turn a profit, often at the expense of the good people of Kernersville? Are they talking about, you know, and I'll throw out a municipal buzzword, TIF-style financing? Is it, is it property tax breaks? What typically, how are they, what's the actual mechanism they're using to attract them?
So, well, first off, our location already attracts them, being right here on 40. So they'll go ahead and give them tax breaks for the property. We actually recently just annexed some property at a very good rate for them to get into, and so we're supplying a industrial builder with water and sewer and road access and everything that's coming out of the taxpayers' dollars.
So if you're at, if you're at a location like that, I mean, the question begs, and you're right, you got, you know, and I look at the map, you know, I was kind of astonished because you are, you are, Kernersville is in the sweet spot economically. They just are. I mean, you're, you're, you're in the midst of three vibrant commercial cities with lands to spare. Isn't that, and I'll throw you out this question, and it's partially rhetorical, but isn't that good enough? I mean, shouldn't the fact, and I know this is kind of crazy, and you're talking to government people, but shouldn't you actually, if this is truly the free market, given that kind of location, given that type of growth around it, shouldn't that mean you can charge more to these people? I mean, if I had a product that was, that was great and in limited supply, and, you know, that would benefit a whole bunch of people economically, I'd be sitting there saying, wow, count my lucky stars, man. You know, these people should be, we're Libertarians, and we're not going to charge them more, but these people should be just happy to come here, just for the sake of coming here. Why do you feel government needs to give it away, well, and I'm going to go to John Gapso for a rule here, was it actually Flea who sang "Give It Away, Give It Away, Give It Away"?
Well, Anthony Kiedis of the Red Hot Chili Peppers.
Right, it was actually Anthony Kiedis then. Flea just jumped up and down behind Anthony Kiedis.
He was, he was the bassist.
Right, no, he actually still is a bassist.
That's correct.
For the Red Hot Chili Peppers. So, and unfortunately, given copyright rules and intellectual property restrictions, we can't play "Give It Away, Give It Away, Give It Away." But why do you think the good people of Kernersville need to give it away, give it away, give it away?
See, I, I think a lot of all this is because we're an incorporated town. So to the people of the town, the administrators, everybody that's on the board, it's ran like a business. So when they, when they have an opportunity to grow that business, they take it. And I must mention that only 10% of our residents here are actually represented. We're, most of us are entrepreneurs or business owners or working the nine-to-five. So we don't even have the representation for somebody to stand up and say, hey, we don't need to be giving this away, we don't need to be, you know, spending our tax dollars on something that's, could already come organically.
Right. You know, we're in the midst of, despite all the foolishness of government, despite, some would say, the idiocy of our leaders, there is still a great deal of economic activity going on, which ironically is, a lot of it is limited by availability of a labor force, not anything you do with the availability of investment capital and/or opportunities. So what you're telling me is, is the aldermen, as they say, as you guys call them, are all in on this? They, as far as they're complicit with tax breaks for companies who shouldn't need them?
Yeah, but they're also making a good penny off of them too, because they weren't there in the first place. And they're usually big, big developments that they're doing it for. So even with the tax breaks, they're coming out on top.
Right, okay.
Just the taxpayers aren't.
Right, no, fair enough. Has the council or the town recognized what this growth means to the cost of education in the area, and what this will do to ultimately to student population that folks are going to have to pay for?
Yes, yes. This is one of those issues that is still being looked at. We have quite a few good-sized schools here in the area that are public, and they're still dealing with overpopulation of students and everything. Of course, with COVID and us getting out of school, that's kind of been put on the back burner. But with everybody getting in now, I'm sure it's going to be a hot topic again here soon.
Right, I hear you. The, how are the schools? And are they run by the, is the budget set by the town, or do you have a separate school board that's got budgetary authority?
We have a separate school board that's Winston-Salem Forsyth County, so we kind of fall up under that jurisdiction.
And so does the town have any input into the budget, or they just have to sit there and take the bill and write a check?
Yeah, pretty much.
Oof, that's not good, that's not good. Yeah. Well, let's, let's reflect on you a little bit. Is this your first time running for electoral office?
It is, it is, yes.
And so I'm intrigued, because I think you're doing exactly the right thing. I, there's some wonderful people who've jumped in and run for federal office, and they've done a great job as candidates. So I don't want to paint with a broad brush, but by and large, for a young man or woman to get involved, it always makes sense to me to start a town council. And not that the position of town council has any less responsibility. In fact, one of our other monsters on this show is, quite frankly, town councils and Board of Educations have more impact on the average citizen's life than really just about any other office, including president or congressman, where you just don't have that kind of contact. Town councilmen, acting as Libertarians, Board of Education folks, acting as Libertarians, having astonishing impact on people's lives. Was that your, was that, I mean, what was the, what was the thought process behind running for being alderman?
Really, I mean, I grew up here in Kernersville, so I've always wanted to be very much involved. And then I joined the Libertarian Party, and I was like, yeah, this is what Kernersville needs. And so I decided that I was going to run.
And what aspect of libertarianism do you think Kernersville needs first and foremost? What, what particular attribute? Is there a part of the platform or the statement of principles? What's that first infusion going to be like?
Um, well, really, it's going to focus on representation right now, because an incorporated town, that's about as libertarian of a town you can get in some fashions. I mean, it could go the other way too, but if you have, you know, the majority being represented, then I think the town could do good.
So when you say, talk to me about the concept of an incorporated town, because, you know, if you live in the Northeast, for example, you know, there's very little non-incorporated land. I mean, we, you'd have to go back to the 18th century before, you know, to have a lot of unincorporated land out there. Yet, down in North Carolina, you've got these, you know, amazing expanses, particularly in western North Carolina, that are spectacular to drive through and completely, apparently unsettled. So when you say an incorporated town, maybe, can you explain that to folks who, who don't understand that?
Yeah, it's, it's basically like a, like a town corporation. So it's put into a, its own business entity, to simplify it.
And when you say there, there isn't a lot of representation, you know, is it only pockets of the incorporated town that have town council or town alderman representation?
Um, well, mostly, for example, the past 10 elections have only seen 500 to 1,000 people come out and vote. And we have a population of 24,000.
Yikes.
Yeah.
What do you think contributes to the apathy? Why are folks sitting on their hands?
Um, well, Kernersville, we, we have about 15 different polling stations, and the honest truth is, half of them don't know where to go most of the time. And we do it on an off-election, so they're not as motivated to get out, so.
Right. Now, are you going to be a representative at-large, or will you represent a particular district?
It is at-large.
Okay, so you can literally appeal to the town, and I'm assuming then a big part of your campaign is voter registration and/or engagement to get people out to vote?
Uh, yes, yes.
And what, what are some of the tactics and strategies that you're going to use to try and do that? What type of mechanism, what are you thinking about?
Well, mostly, for now, it's all on an individual basis. So if I talk to somebody and they're not registered to vote or anything like that, I'll show them how to do it, I'll send them the links and get them to where they need to be so they can get registered and know their precincts.
Excellent. Are you, are you very often the first person in town to reach out to them to do this?
Uh, for the people I'm reaching out to, yes.
Wow. And why do you think that's so? Is there, is the established political base just more based on a, you know, kind of a who-you-know, and in their own internal network? Have they just been unwilling to or not wanting to reach out to newer voters?
Yeah, it's definitely that, it's a who-you-know basis.
I see, yikes. That's pretty tough. Folks, if you're just joining us right now, you're listening to Candidates Corner on LPTV Libertarian Party Television. John Stafford Stanley, got it right finally, is running to be a member of the Kernersville Board of Aldermen. We've agreed that officially, that's a hoity-toity bougie way of saying town council. It's just as important. Kernersville, North Carolina is in the heart of the triad, if you will, out towards central to western North Carolina. You know, if you're from the Northeast or the West Coast, when you think of North Carolina, you often think of the Research Triangle. Kernersville and that surrounding area is part of a economically diverse, very vibrant part of the country, that just doesn't get the airtime sometimes that the Research Triangle does. We're talking about some of the issues that are motivating many people, we're kind of segueing into a conversation about how, how the campaign's going to run. What kind of COVID restrictions are still in place? Is masking in schools still in place? Have folks, are folks by and large back to their somewhat normal routine, or do folks feel the pressure to, you know, to cloison themselves, to mask themselves, to hide in plain sight, as it were?
Uh, it's pretty mixed here. The, all our government buildings, you have to wear a mask to go into, and then businesses here and there have to, they require masks, but they're not, they're not pushy about it. If somebody just says no, they're not going to kick them out. So it's a, it's fairly relaxed at the moment.
It's about to sort of live and let live?
Yeah.
Excellent, excellent. Schools, though, still require masking. Has there been any unrest over that, or any frustration with that?
Uh, from, I've seen from a few parents, yes, and mostly it boils down to they're tired of washing all the masks.
There you go, that's, that puts it, that puts it in perspective. You had a whole bunch of frustrated moms out there. No, no, I get that. Has the government been good at explaining any of the rationale behind any of their COVID restrictions, and did you have an extended period where businesses were forced to be closed?
Uh, yeah, Darren, Governor Roy Cooper shut, shut us down, basically, and Kernersville couldn't do anything about it. But some members of the town board were very informative. It's all based, it's all on an individual level, it seems. They're all going up for the next campaign.
They're, they're at to that next, next big brass ring. The, did you find frustration or confusion of that, and what toll did that take on the, on the, on the local business base?
Well, it's definitely hurt our business quite a bit. I'm actually in marketing, I own my own marketing company, and I just saw a lot of companies just dropping. Have to let people go, and then eventually just have to stop altogether and start their own, or not start their own, but join into the workforce.
The, the unemployment toll and the employment toll, what I mean by that is, people who permanently have lost businesses as a result are unemployed, and the employment toll, which is the folks who are sitting on the sidelines, who are employable but not doing so, how much of an impact has that had, particularly on the hospitality community in your area?
Well, luckily, not too much, because we, we are surrounded by some good-sized cities. So people have been able to find work, people have been able to do stuff, it's just how willing they are at this moment.
And has that been an issue? And do you find, this week, for many states, unemployment comes to a rather inglorious end, for folks who became unemployed at the onset of the, of the crisis? Is that, is that a big issue for where you are?
Uh, no, at this moment, I don't think so. Most everybody was tired of sitting on the couch.
You're, you're in a different part of the country world than we are, that's for sure. People here in Rhode Island, there's a significant part of them who have found a home on their couch. And I have friends who have restaurants who can attest to that. And despite hiring illnesses are still, are still permanent, I laugh about it, but it's laughter and tears at the same time. I've had freshmen's friends, excuse me, closed restaurants, branches of their restaurant chains because of their inability to get help, literally. So it's interesting to see how different parts of the country react to that. What are, what are the issues that you want to advance when you're elected?
Uh, I mean, my biggest issue, I got two big issues right now, is focusing on the organic growth of the town, and basically just stop using our tax dollars to promote big businesses and big builders to come in. And then the representation, that's, those are my two main focuses.
So, talk to me about organic growth. What type of growth do you want to see?
Um, well, like I said earlier, a lot of people in our town are business owners or entrepreneurs or have dreams to be. And they have a lot of business that could reach nationwide or statewide, or grow to, you know, employ 99 employees so that they don't have to do a vaccine test or...
So you want to see, you've got businesses that are frustrated by the notion that they, their growth should be dictated by a, by a vaccine, by, or by a vaccine or a healthcare mandate?
Yeah, I mean, we definitely have a, no bond's really big here, no bond healthcare, and we have a lot of nurses, we have a lot of people working... no bond's really big here, no bond healthcare, and we have a lot of nurses. We have a lot of people working who live here in Kernersville that work at all the local hospitals. So that they have seems to be a harder issue with it than most of us.
In terms of mandates or or okay? No, that's a that's a that's a big issue here here in Rhode Island. When is your election and and what are some of the the events or or campaign approaches you're going to take before then?
Well, right now, we have two two canvassing events set up. We have a spring folly coming up that's usually supposed to be in spring, but due to COVID, we're going to be doing it at the end of September. And we have a local fair that we'll be attending and tabling at. And then there's scheduled to be a debate between all 11 aldermen that are running this year. They just haven't let us know exactly when that's going to be yet. And then a lot of canvassing, a lot of door knocking. Just getting out and speaking to everybody.
What what do you think your community's reaction is going to be to door knocking post COVID? Do you think folks will embrace it? Is that a long is that a long-held tradition in Kernersville politics?
Not really, not really. But I I think people will embrace it because we we're a good community. Like, we're we're real nice with friendly and stop next door to get a cup of sugar, you know?
Nice. Issues that you think folks are going to hit you you on at the door? A lot of times, you know, you get that person at the door when you knock on their door, all of a sudden, they see an opportunity to talk to someone running for elected office and boy, they've been building up stuff to say sometimes it's been years since a politician or a candidate has stopped by their door. What issues do you expect them to hit you with?
Most definitely are infrastructure, our road quality, and then mostly what I've got a lot so far has been national issues that we can't even control.
How do you respond to people when they and tell me what's a national issue that they're 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 yapping at you about? What's a good example of that?
Well, right now, it's a mask and vaccines and everything with COVID. And that's the biggest one, of course, but sometimes it's about immigration.
Is that a big deal in North Carolina? I know, and you've got a number of industries there that aren't afforded the high-tech label, furniture being one of them. I know that's a big part of the world out there. Where is where is where is immigration presenting itself in in a way that would impact their lives? Or is it just the general sense of it?
Yeah, it's it's just the general sense of it. Too many people on Facebook.
Yeah, that's boy, do I know that. Oh, my. The how do you respond to them? When they when they bring up an issue that, you know, may not be in your may not be in your lane, if you will, as is as an alderman.
Well, usually I'll I'll start off with that's not a anything that I could handle. And then I would ask them how they feel about it. And depending on how they feel about it, we can continue the conversation, or maybe I can say, yeah, that's a very good viewpoint that you have. Maybe if we tried it like this or that. And just bring them into a discussion that they feel like they're controlling.
Do you try to steer them towards issues? Are folks satisfied, for example, with the school systems in in your town?
Uh, yeah, for the most part, yeah, there are. I mean, most of us are so busy that it's hard for them to get a grasp on complaining about it.
Interesting, interesting. The talk to me about your your local affiliate. Do you have a well-established affiliate within your metropolitan area? And have they been able to represent for you?
Oh, yeah, I've been working with the Forsyth County affiliate and up under the North Carolina affiliate, and both of them have been tremendous. I mean, even some of the affiliates surrounding us have helped out and truly I am humbled by.
They're doing door knocking. They they put now literally, do you have a bomb card? Are you doing door hangers, things like that?
Yes, yes, we are.
And how is fundraising going? Have you done a money bomb? Have you reached out in into the community? Have you gotten a lot of support that way?
Yeah, yeah, we've we've had quite a bit of support from all over the state and a few donations from across the nation. So.
Right. How how roughly, how many votes do you think it's going to take to win? And what are the mechanics of that? Since these are at large, roughly, how many people are running right now? How many people will win? And where do you where do you think you need to come in in order to be in that on that list?
Really, that's a tricky question this year. Last election, we had nobody run. We just had the five Board of Aldermen that were already running. And then we had one write-in in the last eight days. Decide that he was going to be a write-in. And this election, we have 11 people running.
Wow.
Including myself.
Now, for how many spots?
Five.
Five, okay. So it's really in a very real sense, this is is how can I say this? On one hand, if you spend too much time trying to ballgame it, you're just taking time away from actually running. Because you really don't know how, based on the nature of the the town, the growth patterns of the town, the under underwhelming amount of voters in the town and the number of people running, it it's it's really it's almost too hard to tell. You pretty much have to, I mean, it's a tough call. You pretty much have to work for every single vote you can, not knowing really what the end result and end goal is going to be, isn't it?
Yeah, but I I'm confident that if we can get some of the people who don't normally come out and vote at the municipality level, that we'll we'll have a very good chance.
Right.
Because it's going to be decided by a few votes, I'm sure.
Is this predominantly a Republican, a Democratic town? Or is this race considered unaffiliated?
This is an affiliated race. It's not partisan.
But people know who the Democrats are and who the Republicans are, right?
Yeah, yeah, which most of them all are conservative.
Right. Cultural conservative or or truly across the board conservative?
Culturally conservative.
How now it brings you to point a great issue. Are folks there generally aware of some of our, let's just say, less than culturally conservative support stands on issues like immigration and things like that? And has that impacted you negatively?
Uh, actually, most of our Republicans here, if you talk to them, they'll say, yeah, I lean libertarian, but they're just not on the ballot. So some of the issues they'll they'll try to catch me on, but, you know, from a libertarian standpoint, it's all about what the individual feels as long as it's not violating the non-aggression principle.
Interesting, okay. Right now, the makeup of the board, is it swayed in favor of Republicans or Democrats? Even though no one's supposed to say what they are?
Uh, no, no, not right now. We actually have a mayoral race going on, and that is the center of it all. So it's based between which mayor you're running with, pretty much.
Wow, okay. Are you the only libertarian candidate on the ballot right now?
Uh, yes.
In your town? Okay, fair enough, fair enough. No, listen, it sounds like an outstanding opportunity. It sounds like a town that's in transition from a smaller burg into something more substantial as growth you know, reaches out and breaks out. I mean, the normal economic sway, the normal economic circle of life is that, you know, you see growth in a city in an area, that area becomes too expensive, or there simply isn't enough space to grow in, and then growth leaches out from those major communities into the outlying suburbs or exurbs. And that sounds like what's what's going on here. Is that a pretty fair assessment?
Yeah, yeah.
Cool, okay. Wow, it sounds like it sounds like you've got your work. Now, this is a November, I want to emphasize, this is a November 2021 election or 2022?
21.
21. So you've got a couple of months to to literally make make history. So how 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 important is if for people who hear this tonight or in the coming days reach out and and support to whatever degree possible your candidacy? It's hammer time, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, it's it's definitely hammer time. I look at the calendar every day and I'm like, no, that's too little of a town.
If you receive campaign funds from folks, what what would you like to spend it on right now? Where are your priorities in terms of running the campaign?
Um, well, right now, the way it looks like is we're going to have to stock up on everything again. That we're going to be running out of cards and flyers and posters and all the goodies that we can hand out at tabling. I'm pretty sure we're going to run out and then have to restock again, so.
So so literally, someone who's got an extra $25 burned a hole in their pocket, that can go a long way towards helping your campaign right now, won't it?
Yes, yes.
Well, that's, yeah, and that's, folks, that's that's what needs to happen. Again, every week, you know, I know broken record, hashtag broken record, right? One of the reasons why the progressive movement in this nation is successful is not because their ideas are better ours. They're not. We're right. In areas that they agree with us, where they're right. In areas where they disagree, they're wrong. It's not because of the quality candidates we have, because we have, as anyone who's watched the show over time knows, we have an amazing roster of candidates. What it really comes down to is grassroots support of candidacies around the country. I'll say it again this week. You're frustrated by issues on the national level. This is another outstanding candidacy to get behind, someone who can really, whose community is at a crossroads. You know, a fundamental change. You can ignore races like this and be frustrated later on when general assemblies across this nation, state Senate's across this nation, governors across this nation do the things that they do. I call it town councils gone wild and stupid government tricks. And or you can support candidates like our guest tonight who will be barriers to the type of unfettered governmental growth that we as a party, as a philosophy, as a group, as buddies, as friends, all complain about. How about that? We'll use that word tonight. Complain about incessantly. Yet this is this is the time to do it. You know, you talked earlier on, John, about the about a debate that's coming up. Will there be one debate or more? And what will your participation in those be?
Uh, as of right now, I'm not sure how many debates there will be. I'm not even sure when it will be. I think I think they're having some issues, having 11 of us trying to figure out how to organize it. So they they have me on standby on that one.
I I hope you'll stay in touch with me on that because, you know, we want people like you on the debate stage. Not only just you personally, and you're a fine person, but also what you represent needs to be on the debate stages. And and again, when it comes to pressuring local organizations to our hosting debates to include libertarians, we have to as a as a party, it's a philosophy, it's a movement, we have to point out to those bodies that we represent a thought process, one that has a legitimate role in not govern, because we don't govern, right? Stewarding community resources. And that one that deserves absolutely deserves, has earned the right or run the ballot in all 50 states, like you Ballot Access Committee, Mr. Redmond, Mr. Thrasher, all those folks who've done amazing work. But we are a philosophy that's growing and has had success. And the citizens of that community, not just us, it's not always about us. The citizens of that community have a right to hear about governmental alternatives. Have other libertarians run for any type of Kernersville office in the past, John?
Uh, not that I know of. I mean, the town was founded on volunteerism. So at some point, they were definitely libertarians, even if they didn't know it.
Isn't that the case so often? Isn't that usually what's happening? So folks, again, a call to action. Anyone who hears this in the coming days in North Carolina, you know, it you've got people investing and 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 one of the reasons I always congratulate candidates like yourself, again, hashtag broken record, is that individuals like yourself exhibiting some of the highest forms of patriotism. Being willing to take time away from your family, time away from your career, in other words, being generous. Not just financially, but generosity of time and generosity of spirit. You're willing to do that for your community, both in the run for office, and then when you're successful in, well, good good news, you won. Now the real work begins. All that time away from your families for nothing in terms of personal gain. John, I think it's fair to say you will gain nothing from this other than sleeplessness, long nights, if you're successful in winning phone calls from people you've never met before, all the joy that comes with being elected. Yet you're willing to do it. And 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 John is willing to work to advance our philosophy. So, yes, we owe him our support. We there is a debt there. You know, there is a bill that's come due. And again, folks need to support absolutely need to do whatever they can to bleed for these folks who are running across the country. So if you're frustrated by local events, do the Wheel of Fortune. Pick out a candidate. John's a perfect example of one, across the United States, who you're just gonna you're gonna write a small check for. You understand times are difficult. Do what you can. Or you're going to make a few phone calls on behalf of them. If you live close enough, you're going to take a drive for an hour or two and spend a lovely weekend, autumn weekend. What better way to spend a fun weekend? No, don't obsess over, I don't know, what what what's that? What's the flavor that everyone gets crazy about, John? During during the fall, it's
Pumpkin crap?
Yeah, pumpkin crap. All right. Just say no to pumpkin crap. Coffee should never be defiled with pumpkin and and spend that couple of dollars on Mr. Stanley. Now, Mr. Stanley, every every week, we close out our show engaging in what we call shameless self-promotion. So, Mr. Stanley, you are a person unlike me of few words, and I say that as a compliment, because when you say something, it means something. So what I want you to do is tell folks how they can reach out to you and support your candidacy. I have a feeling people like you are probably uncomfortable asking for money. But since this is a show about candidacies, I just need to remind people the reason as candidates, we ask for money from people is twofold. Obviously, it's to pay for things. You shouldn't, as a candidate, and should not have to be, in addition to giving you your time, your life, your time away from your family, time away from your business, should not have to be writing big checks to pay for it. But number two, and just as important, when people donate to your campaign, they become invested in it. I always use the analogy, it's like a restaurant. You go to a restaurant and you hang out with the owner, you get to know him a little bit. And then all of a sudden, you feel like you're part of that restaurant. Until you send friends to that restaurant, and they refer people to that restaurant because they want to be associated with this really cool new restaurant. Well, John Stafford Stanley, you are the official new really cool restaurant, libertarian restaurant in Kernersville, North Carolina. How about that? So how can people come to your restaurant, wine and dine, and 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 refer other people on to your restaurant?
Well, the best way right now is to either reach out on Facebook at our at Stanley for Liberty or go to or go to Stanley or johnstaffordstanley.com. And you can donate there, you can, uh, fill out a form to get involved, or you can just, uh, read about me.
Excellent. And is there a donate button on that? Or how can folks donate to your campaign?
There are multiple.
So you're, you're willing at any time, forget that entire run-up, you're perfectly content to ask people for money. You got, God, God bless you. Well, you know, if, if you're doing events in the coming months or month, sorry, month and a half or so, please let us know about them. If you're doing a money bomb, please let us know about them. We're happy to put them up on the scroll here and, and, and let people know what's going on. Uh, and, and, and share them with me and, and things like that because we're blessed here. We've got nearly 750,000 Americans who subscribe to or, or like or reach out or whatever with this Libertarian Party Facebook page, 750,000 Americans. Now, that might be, not be the countless millions, um, that the Democrats and Republicans have, but you know that the 750,000 we have are one whole hell of a lot smarter than the other two put together because, well, they're libertarians, right? So, yeah, let's look to this page, not just as a, uh, a place where some pretty smart things are said in terms of posts and pronouncements, but let's look to this page as a source of community, candidates like yourself. How's that sound? Fair enough. Why don't you, we, we've got a minute or two left. Why don't you give folks your, 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 your elevator pitch? You know, I, I want you to fire people up, all right, just, I want you to think or pretend or, and/or realize that there are libertarians from around the country who are going to watch this, as well as people in Kernersville. So what is it, let's close out on, what is it that you want to say to the voters of Kernersville right now and to libertarians everywhere?
Um, really, uh, that I just want to spread liberty, uh, want us to have a, uh, a brighter future for our children and I want us to be able to be individuals. And as long as we can be individuals comfortably, then I think that's a better tomorrow, no matter what.
Excellent. John Stafford Stanley managed to say in about three sentences, but it takes me about 40 minutes. Congratulations, my friend. I, I wish you nothing but the best. And again, it is an honor to spend time with you this evening talking about Kernersville, North Carolina, the, the parish, if you will, of western North Carolina. Folks, you've been listening to LPTV Libertarian Party Television, a production of the Libertarian National Committee and Libertarian Party. Willie Billu serving his chair. As always, John Gapso on the big board, bringing us infotainment graphics. I'm your host, Pat Ford. I'm proud right now. I currently serve as the alternate for Region Eight on Libertarian National Committee. But this is the job that gives me joy. Trying to spread a message of libertarian, looming libertarian success across Libertarian Party. Thanks again for joining us. We take a moment, if you can, in the next week or so. Scroll through, if you will, all the great LPTV programming. Take a listen to, uh, to my friend Dave Valenti's show on Sunday nights. Libertarians at Large. Of, of course, the amazing work done by the folks promoting, if you will, both the Latin American and Central American perspective on the Libertarian Party. Take a look through our candidate show with a little bit of a mission. There's a way you could pull together your own little slush fund. And listen, folks, it might be $25, it might be $50, it might be $10, whatever it is. That's amazing. Scroll through these shows and take a look at which libertarian candidate speaks to you. It could be a regional issue, it could be a particular campaign issue, it could be just someone who just you find to be dynamic or soft-spoken, but with great intent. Find those one or two candidates, please, this week and send them a check. It'll be five bucks. Five less dollars, they have to pay it for themselves. It's five less dollars that they won't go without to support. Like, for example, in tonight's case, a campaign that needs support, generating additional collateral that they can distribute around the nation. Make that investment a time. Contribute to the positive growth of a candidate somewhere in this country. Make it exciting, make it interesting, make it someone that you've never met, you may never meet. And then walk away with that feeling that you're a part of something special this year. That you were a part of something bigger than yourself. And in fact, that your hard work personally in, 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 in one way or another is moving forward. Candidacies like Mr. Stanley's tonight. Folks, we'll be back on Monday night. Coming up in the next few weeks, folks from Kentucky, you, folks from, well, around the nation are going to be joining us. If you've got an event that you're, uh, talking about, and there's a great event coming up in Connecticut, by the way. If you, if you live here in the Northeast, we'll be promoting that on Monday evening. Uh, it's a rock and roll concert, three or four bands playing, uh, Joe Jorgensen is going to be there. You know, Larry's going to be there, Larry Sharp. An amazing event. Also, coming up in Pennsylvania, Liberty is going to be alive and well. Also, coming up in New Rochelle, New York, Liberty is going to be alive and well. I get a lot of response from folks in the Northeast because I see them more frequently. Let us know what we can do to promote your libertarian event. Folks, have a wonderful, safe weekend. Again, it's time to get to work. Good night.